This is going to be a fun conversation, I can tell you this. I've been looking forward to having a conversation with you for a while. Because I do think that you're someone of the elder statesmen in the county nowadays. We both somewhat are the elder statesmen in this county nowadays. And you've been on the commission for a number of years. Let's start with that one to get this thing rolling the right way, okay?
Sure.
Tell me a little bit about how Lou Hilker became a Williams County Commissioner.
Well, a number of years ago, I was considering a run as a county commissioner. I talked to five key people in the county. And I said, you know, in a year or two, I'm thinking about, you know, entering the race. I want to know what are your thoughts? And I said, I'll get back with you in a month or two and see what your thoughts are. Lo and behold, I got a call within two weeks and said, Lou, what if you had to make your decision tomorrow? And I said, well, what do you mean make my decision tomorrow? Well, it just so happened that Tom Stroup, county commissioner, was going to be tendering his resignation to accept the job in Columbus. He didn't retire, he accepted a job in Columbus and he and his family moved there. So, you know, I said, well, you know, the timing, you know, I'm not sure about the timing. And I was thinking closer to retirement, maybe I would consider, you know, being a county commissioner. So I really gave it a lot of thought. And of course, this opportunity come up. From there, the Republican Party, since Tom Stroup was a Republican, the Republican Party, the Central Committee is the one who decides who the next commissioner would be to fulfill the balance of that term. And what happened was, there were 25 applicants. And those applicants was screened by a committee. It came down to five applicants, of which I was one of those five. We all went through an interview process one evening. And after, after the interview process, they began to vote. There was, I think, 30 people that voted. And so you had to have 16 votes or more to be approved. And if, after the first vote, if there was not anyone with 16 votes, the lowest one with votes dropped off, and then you voted on four. And that night, democracy was at its best. Five candidates, there wasn't 16 votes, one dropped off. Four candidates, there wasn't 16 votes, one dropped off. Three candidates, there wasn't 16 votes, one dropped off. Two candidates, I received over 16 votes, I don't know how many votes I received.
Sure.
And I was appointed the commissioner. Well, then from there, I fulfilled his term, and then I needed to run for that seat. And in 2008, I ran for that seat. In the Republican primary, I was challenged by a local business lady here in town, an accountant. Bless her heart, she's deceased now, a wonderful lady. And I prevailed in the Republican Party's primary. Then I went on to the general, I had two independents challenge me in the general. And again, I won in the general. And in both of those, I won on a mandate. So, you know, I feel the county really felt I was the individual, you know, for that position. And so here we are today. I feel I still have a lot more to offer to the county, and that's why I'm seeking another term.
Now, you're retired now, right?
Yes.
You don't work at the bank anymore?
Yes.
How many years at the bank?
Forty-five years.
Forty-five, and which bank was that?
Farmers Merchant State Bank.
Farmers and Merchant State Bank, it's my bank, how's that?
Right.
I'm a F and M customer, how's that? All right? That means the questions get harder from here, that's, you know, because I want more, I want more interest on my savings account, okay? Even though you can't do that anymore. All right? You know, so that's got to give you quite a bit of a viewpoint of what was going on and what is going on right now around the county with that kind of a background.
Sure. It does. And the biggest responsibility in the commissioner's office is budgetary items. We only have X number of dollars to divvy out with all the different departments and elected officials. There is no magic box in the back room to go create some money. We're not the federal government that prints money or
Sure.
does inflationary type things. So we have to live within that. And so there's a lot of thought and ideas going to it. Not only with the commissioners, with the treasurer, with the auditor, with the other elected officials. And I feel it's a good team and we work together on that.
Okay. There is conversation on the streets, and I always use a lot of questions that I hear from people at a coffee shop or whatever, and this is one of them, okay? Some say, well, you know, Lou's 70 years young, okay? And I'm getting close to that, man, my wife's that age, so it's a, that's a young age in my mind, okay? He took the job and in a couple of years, he'll decide he's going to move to Florida. And that gives him the ability in the Republican Party and in Williams County, the ability to hand that torch off to the next person that they would like to have be the next Lou Hilker.
Number one, I have no intentions of retiring early. When I'm reelected for another term, I will fulfill that term, unless the good Lord takes me home.
Sure.
Ask me three years from now if I'm going to do another term.
Sure.
Today, I can't give you that answer.
Okay.
But I intend of serving those four years. That's my commitment to this county.
Okay. And there's a possibility that there may be four more after that if you're still in good health and you're, like, my wife would like to have me out of the house as much as she would have. I'm not sure what your home front is, but my wife likes to see me leave every day.
Well, my wife is very supportive of me. We do a lot of things together. We have four grown children. One in Florida, one in New Jersey, one in Toledo, one in Columbus. So we spend a fair amount of time on the road and traveling, visiting our kids, and we always look forward to that. This COVID issue has really kind of put a damper on it. But we're looking forward to getting out as soon as the things lighten up, that we can do more business with the family.
Sure, that has made it tough, there's just no doubt about that. So the rumor though, right at this point in time, that you're just here as a seat filler for a short amount of time, there's no validity to that at all?
I would call that fake news.
Fake news, okay, we will go along with that. And obviously, we don't know what our health's going to be like. We don't know what circumstances might happen with family members or anything else. And that would mean, you know, obviously, a whole different outlook at that point in time. I understand that too, no problem. All right, let's talk a little bit about the, about this conversation we're having today. Because you were really, and folks with you, and I guess we'll just keep it to you and me at this point in time, because when we first talked, you were the person that said, hey, I really don't want to do another meet the candidates night. I want a different venue, I want a different way of doing this thing. And that is kind of why we did what we did last night with the other two commission candidates, and why you and I are sitting here today. Could you tell people why you felt that way?
Well, we're sitting here with the county, well, 37,500 people. Back in September, when I was invited by the Chamber of Commerce to do, meet the candidates, I said, well, I'll tell you what, I'll do one, but I'm not going to do two. And I said, whoever you need to talk to, to collaborate together, to bring this together, to have one, I'm open to that, but I'm committed to one. Obviously, you know, here we are today. But when we look at 37,500 people, here we are, we're in a presidential election right now. The Vice President of the United States, guess what? They're doing one debate. Do we need more than that in the county? I don't think so. But, you know, I'm willing to talk to you, so.
Sure, no, I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you're here. There was a situation afterwards where there were, the other two candidates claimed that they were talked to about not being here last night, okay? They were asked, they were highly recommended that they not come in and talk to me because I'm going to ask mean questions, and I'm a mean guy all the way around. So be aware of that, okay? And it has been attributed back to you and the Republican Party. Is there any truth to that?
There is not. That was my own decision that I made right up front. And I did that early on in September, when I heard about it. So I know nothing of the Republican Party saying, no, you know, don't do it. That was my decision, not somebody else's.
Okay, so your decision came long before that?
Yes.
And whoever decided to tell these candidates that they shouldn't be here, probably did it on their own.
And no one ever told me that you were mean and nasty.
Okay, well, I try not to be mean and nasty, but there are questions, I don't know what it is. What is it about this world nowadays? Again, national news is over here, this is a whole different game. This is, this is a local newscast, we're not perfect, we're not CBS, we're not Fox News. You know, we're WQCT in Bryan, Ohio, okay? And I think my job is to try to ask some of the questions that people ask every day, okay? That I hear every day, that I don't hear asked every day.
Sure.
And those questions at times, some people, I guess, feel are mean or difficult. But they're difficult questions maybe to ask. And that's one of them, right there. Because it did, at this point in time, with our radio station, we took a hit like everybody else did the first couple of months. So when somebody comes out and says, man, you shouldn't be part of this, and this is a moneymaker for us, it becomes a difficult situation, you know? And we were down 60% the first couple of months, as a banker, you can appreciate that. And so whenever anybody comes in and says, so you know, what would they have said, what would Lou Hilker have said if he's, if somebody was standing out in front of F and M 20 years ago saying, don't go in and talk to that Lou Hilker guy because he's mean and nasty and he won't give you a loan, you know? It'd probably upset you a little bit.
Well, I proved myself to people where I didn't get that reputation.
Sure. And that's a good thing, okay? All right, let's move on to this thing. The COVID came to town in Williams County, okay? Let's start first of all with the budget of the Williams County Commissioners, because you said that was exactly the primary function of the Commissioners, and I agree. You're in charge of our money, all right? Before the COVID hit, how were we doing?
We were doing very well. The biggest concern that we had, and we sit down with the elected officials and the auditor ran some numbers, and we talked about it at length. You know, how badly is this going to affect us? You know, the country is starting to slow down, the, by, I think it was what? March the 17th, the governor said, we need you to stay at home as much as possible. So we're just saying, okay, our revenues could really take a big hit. Our biggest source of revenue is sales tax. And so if people weren't out and about spending money, where are we going to be at? So we took a look at it, and we felt that the figure was $1.4 million would need to be reduced from our anticipated revenues coming in. So therefore, you have to look at the expense side and do the same thing on the expense side. As a result, the biggest hit then comes with the employees, okay? That's one of our biggest expenses, is wages. So we worked out a plan where if we reduced the employees, as many departments as possible, where they would work four days a week instead of five days a week, that would save the county a significant amount of money. But at the same time, the state of Ohio come out with what they call the shared work program, where if you miss one day's work because of this, because of the slowdown, you could apply for unemployment and receive that unemployment for that missed day of work. So we had departments that qualified for that, and they did that. And then, of course, you know, then from the national standpoint, they offered the weekly incentive also, if you were unemployed, and you could apply for that as well. So then along came the $1,200 per individual stimulus money. And lo and behold, people started spending. I mean, you could go to the local Walmart, you couldn't find a bicycle on the rack.
Sure.
You go to the local bike shops, no bicycles available, no TVs available. People were spending that money. You talk to the car dealers, people were buying vehicles. So what happened was, our sales tax did not take a hit like we thought it would. And that is what saved the county from being in a tougher situation. So we have survived that storm quite well. But the big question is 2021. Where are we going to be in 2021? We don't know. The government can't continue to just hand out money, hand out money, hand out money. It's going to become inflationary, it's going to cost us big time to repay that in the future. So how much money will people have to spend to keep that sales tax up? Our biggest source of income. That remains to be seen. So 2021, we're wrestling with that budget right now, not knowing, you know, what's going to shake out.
That's a, that's a difficult situation, there's no doubt about that. You received some CARES money as well?
Yes.
And how are you going to spend that?
Right now, that's really interesting. Seems like every day that changes as to what the rules are on those, on the CARES money. You had certain projects that you could do, you heard about the patrol cars that was ordered. You heard about other areas on PPE that could be refunded back, et cetera. But then they came along and they said, well, I'll tell you what we can do. Your first responders' salaries, your EMS salaries, anyone who is in law enforcement salaries, you can file to claim that money back that you paid to them. So we had to shift gears in the middle of the stream and say, no, wait a minute here. If that can be done, that might be the best way to handle this. So we're still wrestling with that yet today, how we're going to handle that. We are looking to bring in the income on the CARES side to cover those wages, which we've already paid those wages out. So that gives us funding in the general fund that we then can maybe use for another purpose. So it's a moving target.
Okay.
I'm telling you this now, tomorrow morning, there could be another change.
Could be totally changed. I saw, read in the paper the other day, something about a computer upgrade? Computer system upgrade to the county?
Yes.
Is that something that you guys feel honestly qualifies? Because are these not audited at some point in time and somebody? And again, this is a moving target, that's not a good situation either. But is this not an audible situation where somebody could down the road say, eh, you spent that money there, but you can't do it?
Well, there's a list of things that you can do, and that is, if this continues to be a crisis, and you have to have your employees work at home, are your computer upgrade, are your computers to the point where you can handle all of that from home? So we looked at it, we needed to upgrade to do that.
Sure.
Because there were a fair amount of people that have been working at home from the spring up to now. And so we feel that that will qualify. Now, we also are going into this, and if we spend money on something that may not qualify, we need to be able to come up with the money to pay that back. Because the government's going to say, oh, that wasn't, that wasn't allowable, therefore you need to pay that back. So that's another thing that we have, we've had to struggle with.
Sure.
And we feel that we're on the right track. Anything that we are doing, we feel it's going to be something that will be on that line item by line item that appears to be an acceptable CARES act.
Is there, is there a rainy day fund or some sort of a fund there with the county that has that much money in it?
We, we don't call it a rainy day fund. We do have an unappropriated fund that we built up over the years. Right now, that's a 4.6 million.
Okay.
But keep in mind, that's about 90 days worth of our revenue, should the revenue stream stop.
Sure.
What's the chance of us stopping totally? Probably pretty slim. But we feel that that amount of money needs to remain there, just in case the worst should happen.
Sure.
And right now, we don't know what the future is, and therefore, we need to keep that balance there just in case we have to dip into it.
Sure. I think all the utilities around the area have that. Most of the cities that are doing relatively well will have some sort of a fund balance that they can carry on for that same reason. Lou Hilker is my guest right now, it is 11:22 on the Q. He's gracious enough, he's going to hang with me for another segment here. We'll be back to ask some questions from last night's conversation we had with the other two commission candidates and more when we get back to our meet the candidates conversation here on the Q 96.5 FM. 11:28 on the Q, and I have Lou Hilker with me right now. Lou, let's turn our attention to last night, okay? We had both, you now have an independent and a Democratic candidate running for county commission right now.
Sure.
Okay? Both of them are female at this point in time, and we had the conversation last night, and you can clarify this for me, because you clarified it for me on the break. There have been female county commissioners in Williams County before?
Yes, there have. There have been three since I've lived in the area. We had Roseanne Fisher, and we had Gloria Osborne, and also Barb Fisher. And I believe a couple of those ladies are even served on the same, on the same term at the same time, which was, which was very interesting.
And how long ago would that have been, Lou?
I would say, um,
Just ballpark?
Probably back in the 90s.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, probably in the 90s.
So these, if one of the two of them were elected this year, they would not be the first, as we were trying to decide last night, and I appreciate the information at this point in time. There is still, in their mind, okay, a good old boys network here in Williams County. And they still feel like they're trying to work through the good old boys network in Williams County. How do you see that?
Well, first of all, I would like to know how they describe the good old boys network. Just because someone works together and maybe agrees on certain items, I don't necessarily call that a good old boys network. I've never been asked or forced to make certain decisions to stay in line with a so-called good old boys network. But there again, I don't know what, how you describe a good old boys network.
Trying to, trying to get into their minds right now, that gives you some clarity, you know, the idea that there aren't many women in, as a county commissioner right now, and they feel like, you know, their road is uphill, and it's, and it's a little harder because they're a female.
I don't see it that way. Show me the experience, show me the leadership, and show me, you know, what you've done, and I'll vote for you if you deserve that.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
Regardless if it's male or female.
Okay. Let's take a listen to, let's, let's think about what they said also last night. And these were directed at the Commissioners and at you as well. One comment was, first of all, that one of the candidates has been trying to get a meeting with the Commissioners over an issue that she has had. And it does seem that's the issue that she is the most important to her at this point in time as she's running for, for election, okay? And, and she has been thwarted, she's been stonewalled. She can't, she can't come in and talk to you about what she has on her mind.
Well, I, I heard quite a bit of the debate or forum last night. I believe that's the same individual that said that she left me a message on my phone for me to return the call. That's far from the truth. I have never received any messages from her. She says she has the call log. Show me the call log and show me how many seconds that you were on the phone, and that will tell me rather than not, you left a message. But
I think last night, she said to clarify that she left one message, okay? And then had the call logs, and I have not seen the call logs personally either.
I never received one message. And I'm sitting here, I built my life around integrity, and I will not have an attack by someone who said that they left a message when I never received a message. I have four ways to be contacted. My home phone, of which there is a recorder on it. My personal cell phone, there's a recorder on it. I have a county cell phone that has caused me fits a few times, but there was no messages on that. And then we also have the office phone at the Commissioners' office, where you can call in and leave a message, or give a message to one of the gals, and then we'll see that it's forwarded to us. I never received one message from her.
So if she decided, and this is Jennifer King, Mrs. King, if she still has an issue with the Commissioners and would like to bring it in front of the Commissioners, how would she go about doing that?
Call, is that an appointment? And let the clerk know what she would like to speak with, so that it's on the agenda. The only time that I'm aware that she come up and was not able to speak was a day when we had a heavy schedule. Jobs and Family Services was coming in to give us an update in regards to their office. And she was bound to determine that she wanted to come in and speak. She did come in, we stuck to the agenda. That was the first time I ever met her, was in that setting. And, and that was a very short conversation between her and I. It was important to her to tell me who her relatives were. I guess that was, that way I was supposed to accept her as an individual or whatever. I don't know, I, that was a little bit, a little bit nervy, so to speak, you know? Tell me who you are, not who your relatives are.
Right.
And then she proceeded to say that, you know, she had an issue, and if I wanted to know what it was, I should just call her. Well, if you have an issue, let me know. Tell me about it.
Okay.
That particular day, she didn't have time, she left rather abruptly. At the same time, was recording that entire conversation on her cell phone. Why? That sounds a little bizarre as well.
Both candidates last night alluded to the idea that they felt like there were times when people came to the Commissioners, requested their time, requested an audience with you, with a topic that they had in their mind. And it didn't happen to be, from their perspective, the topic that you guys wanted to talk about. So again, they were not allowed to come back in. Any of those that you can recall?
Number one, I'd like to have a good example of that, and who it was, when it was. I don't ever recall us denying someone to talk about a certain subject or conversation. Give me more information, and, you know, maybe, maybe I can verify. But give me more information. I have never known of anyone that was turned away and denied.
So if somebody has a subject that they would like to talk to the Commissioners about, no matter what that subject might be, you guys are willing to sit down and talk to them?
Sure. And it may not have to even be the entire Commissioner Board. It might be a one-on-one, like you and I are sitting here talking now, just to find out some facts. Recently, we had an individual from a, from a community come in and wanted to talk to us about Rails to Trails. And that was fine, but that same conversation could have been held with one Commissioner because of the fact that what they were seeking, the Commissioners had nothing to do with it, it needed to go to another entity. So if you know what that subject is up front, that would save time. But were we upset that he committed? No, we weren't upset at all. But he also learned that you need to contact someone in another county to get the answer that he was looking for.
Okay. I think, I surmise last night, listening to what you just said and what I heard last night, that Heather felt like, and I think Jennifer backed her up, that, that there had been conversations one-on-one like that, that they felt like the topic was one, that the Commissioner that they were talking to really did not feel like, you know, was a legitimate conversation, and they dropped it entirely. And that's what I kind of got out of that conversation, I don't know whether you did or not.
Well, again, I'm going to go back to, give me the specifics. What was it about, so that I could answer that question intelligently?
Okay, very good. Jobs and Family Services, you brought it up a minute ago. And I think it's, it is an issue for any county commission anywhere. It is an issue right now that is a federal issue, a state issue, and a local issue. And I don't think anybody can solve it overnight. But it has been particularly difficult around here, because it overnight. But it has been particularly difficult around here because we had an issue with the sheriff and Jobs and Family Services. We have an issue with Jennifer and Jobs and Family Services. There have been some changes at Jobs and Family Services. Where are we at with those guys? Are they doing a good job, or do we have a major problem there? Are there things that we, fires there that are about to happen?
We've come a long way. A few years ago, there were some issues that really needed to be dealt with. There have been changes in personnel that has helped the situation. Jobs and Family Services is a very complicated department, as you well know. You know, they deal with employment issues. They deal with past due child support. They deal with domestic issues with families. They deal with child placement, and it goes on and on. And it's a very complicated department. It's a state department. We have a county office here. The commissioners, in essence, our contribution to that from a monetary standpoint is about $400,000 a year. All the rest of the dollars are state dollars.
What is their total budget, Lou, off the top of your head? Do you have a feel for that?
I can't answer that. I'm not going to throw a number out.
Sure. But would we be half of their budget, a quarter of their budget, 10% of their budget, just a rough idea?
I would say 10%.
Okay.
And I could be wrong.
Sure. But if it was half or three-quarters, that would be a different number.
And what those dollars are used for is child placement. Now, you probably read in the paper here recently where we had some discussion with the prosecutor, with the director of Jobs and Family Services and his administrator, and we talked about, could we take some of those monies and use those monies to have some of these kids that's local be adopted by other parents here in the county, to keep them in a loving home, to keep them in the area where maybe there's other relatives, et cetera. And we came up with a program where expenses that they would incur with attorney fees or other fees, that we would pay 50 cents on a dollar, up to a maximum of $5,000. And we even encouraged that to go a step further. If there was two siblings in the family, that family would be willing to adopt two siblings to keep them together. And I brought that to the table as we were talking about this, because at the time, radio station in Fort Wayne happened to be a day that they were talking about the adoption and different things, and this lady called in, and she said that she had been adopted, and she was so thankful that she and her brother were adopted by the same family. So as we're talking about this, the light went off and said, look, let's be sure if there's two siblings, can we keep them together and make that offer, you know, for two, to a loving family here in the county. And that's still, it's unfolding as we speak, and we're looking forward to participate with that. Now, by allowing some of those funds to be used for that, guess what? We're not going to have to spend as much in the future, in our opinion, for child placement, because now these kids will be in a loving home.
Yeah. You walked right into the next conversation that I wanted to bring up, because the other day, there was Shirley Wagner who came to the Rotary Club, and she brought up two points that were really stuck in my mind. First of all, that the foster program and that entire system that surrounds it, the kids that go through that, 70% of those kids end up having drug problems, first of all, and 80% of those kids end up in jail at some point in time. Now, there was a conversation that went back and forth and around and around, and there were questions asked and everything else. And at one point in time, Mr. Rumel's voice pops up onto the conversation. You may have seen the video of this already as well.
I did.
His conversation was, you know, one of us gets it, and the other two don't. And he actually used both your names. What does he get and what don't you get, according to Terry?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because I heard that, and I talked to Terry about this yesterday. And I said, Terry, I don't understand that comment. He said, that comment was misconstrued. And you can, you know, talk to Mr. Rumel about this. He said, what he meant by that was, he was the one that was getting a lot of calls in regards to Jobs and Family Services and that particular subject. And what he was saying was, I want you to call Lou, I want you to call Brian, I want you to call Jim Hoops. That's how he interpreted that when I asked him about it.
Okay.
And, yeah, we get it. I'm a good friend of Shirley and her husband, and we talk from time to time. And Shirley's a remarkable woman. For the bards to take her in and do what they did to mentor her on the right track, I marvel at that family. And, you know, watch them on Facebook, things they're doing as a family, and it's just, it's awesome.
Yeah. You know, listening to it, and I've listened to it three or four different times, okay? And I'd love to have Terry come in and explain this to me as well, all right? Because the way it was said was, they don't get it, give them a call and give them an ask. That's the way you took it initially as well, I would think, because, you know, you asked the question.
That's why I asked him. I said, well, Terry, wait a minute. You're saying we don't get it. Are you throwing us under the bus?
Sounded like it, didn't it?
And he said, no, 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 no. That's not what was meant by it. And like I say, you're welcome to talk to Terry about that.
I would hope that he would talk to me about that, because I think it is one of the most critical issues that we have. And when we talked to the sheriffs the other day, they felt like one of the most major issues that we have in the area is the drug issue that we have. And a number of these young folks that we're talking about end up right in that drug society. They end up in the human trafficking side of this society. It all does seem to feed right out of that, you know, Jobs and Family Services and adoption type programs oftentimes. Programs that were supposedly set up to try to help that and avoid that. How much oversight do you have on that before? And I want you to answer that question too, and I hope I don't get you... How much oversight do the commissioners have over Jobs and Family Services?
We have oversight of the budget, just to review the budget and make sure it stays in line. And we hire the director, and the director reports to us. We, as commissioners, on a monthly basis, we have a meeting with all supervisors. We meet together. Each supervisor gives a report of their department, what's happening, how many cases they're working with, how much money's been collected on past due child support. I mean, every department gives a report, and that's been going on for about a year now. And the supervisors seem to enjoy that because they feel they're being held accountable as to what's going on in their department, and they want to share. There's a lot of good news that they share. But going to the drug issue, and this might date me a little bit. When I was growing up in high school, we didn't have a drug issue. We had an alcohol issue. And to see how that drug issue has grown over the years, and when those drugs get a hold of a life, you know, how devastating it can be, not only for the individual, but for the family that's dealing with that. You know, I look at this, that the local law enforcement needs to take a lead. Here recently, there was an article in the paper. There was been some leads in regards to some drug issues as far as selling and purchasing, and they got the man, Sheriff Cohart got the man unit involved, and they went in, and as a result, there was multiple people that were charged and are waiting, you know, their final outcome of what's going to happen with them. But that's what we need. And the man unit is a great unit from northwest Ohio. And we, as commissioners, have been down there. They've given us a tour. They've talked to us about how they handle different cases when they get these leads, et cetera. And they do a remarkable job, and the sheriff's department is working very well with them.
How do we, as a county government, sheriff's department, county commissioners, how do we take a more active approach, or should we take a more active approach, in the day-to-day operations of Jobs and Family Services and the adoptions in the area?
There probably needs to be more collaboration between the sheriff's department, between Jobs and Family Services, the commissioners, and other elected officials, and the courts as well. You know, a couple of years ago, sheriff, excuse me, not sheriff, but Judge Steltzer came to our office and told us that he was looking to do this drug court program, and we embraced that with him. And it's a situation where someone, instead of going to jail, they end up, they take counseling, they take classes, they're mentored, and after a period of time, they graduate from that program. And there's been some awesome stories where these people have been able to get out of that addiction and live good, productive lives. And those type things of collaborating on those type things together is important with all these different departments.
Okay. With that, that wraps up our coverage of the candidates tonight. We're back into classic hits here on the Q 96.5 FM. We're back into classic hits here on the Q 96.5 FM.
We thank our sponsors tonight, your local American Family Insurance agent Danielle Van Ada, the main stops in Northwest Ohio, Culligan Sales and Service of Northwest Ohio, Midwest Community Federal Credit Union, and the Bryan Area Chamber of Commerce Holiday Decorating Committee. With that, we're back into classic kits on the Q. 96.5 FM, don't forget Lou Hilkart will be with me in the morning at 11 o'clock here on the Q.
As hard as you do at Midwest.
All right, guys.
It's gonna be interesting.
We're built for hard work.
Yeah, we'll see.
Oh my goodness.
It will be interesting.
Tomorrow at 11?
Yeah, tomorrow at 11, it will be fun. I promise you.
Do you guys have the online?
You can either go up to our website and then click on there or you can use the tune-in app. We'll tune in as well.
Okay.
Okay. And then we're recording that one as well. Yes, well, it will be interesting, I promise you. How's that? It will be, it will be an interesting day. That's all I'm gonna say. Yep, it will be, it will be an interesting day.